Here.
Thank you, Brian.
Here.
Ray Jackson.
Here.
Get your.
Here.
You're Stephen.
Yeah.
I'm myself, Tim.
Move the stellar up to the beginning of that meeting here, so.
Just real quick, I got the working session on there first, and we talked about that last meeting. We're gonna have the public open house. That's at the Civic Club next Monday, the 28th. And part of that meeting, just to get public feedback on kind of that broad scope we had, and try to narrow it down. HWC has asked, you know, we scheduled a working session with council, like, discuss the results and public feedback, and kind of give them some direction going forward. So, I don't know if you guys have thought about that. Or as when do we want to meet? Kind of that week after the 28th there.
All right, original means 11th, right?
Yeah. Sorry.
We got anything you want on the team?
I think we want to do it probably sooner. They gotta kind of put a lot of work in, prevent the deadline error.
We were, we were kind of pigeonholed in on the way, and the only problem with that is they've got the kids' open house there that runs for, from 5:30 to 6:30. Well, we can, we can start at 6:30, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they can start at 6:30. On the fourth, on the fourth at 6:30. Maybe a couple minutes late coming in, but I'll be there.
I'll stall for you.
I appreciate it.
So what date was it?
Fourth, August 4th at 6:30.
Another thing, so we briefly talked about the contract proposal at the last meeting. I've said, kind of, John and I talked a little bit about it, and we sent our feedback over. My thing, probably my biggest concern is just make, agreeing to such a big contract. You know, being federal funded dollars and all the things we know that's going on there. I think our desire is to kind of maybe take it as a first day step. Let's get us through the ground location base, see where we're at with the project scope, and then kind of go from there. Yeah, I believe you guys all have a copy of kind of the ladder up it together, if I can go through that if you'd like. I know Tim would like to talk.
Yeah.
There's no questions from me, maybe we'll just let Tim out on the floor.
Yep.
Good evening, my name is Tim Hunt with HWC, some of you have seen me in the past. I appreciate that, number one, we at HWC are thankful that you selected us to actually help you lead through this stellar program. So, thank you for your selecting us. So when Gary, when he sent his email, the first thing we did, we collected our team together. We sat down and we looked at the phase, and if you, if you look at our industry, we try to focus the whole thing, so you see the worst case scenario. Depending on which route you chose, there are some that will be lesser design than some that are going to be more stringent design. They'll have to meet criteria for ADA and all like that with the surveys and stuff. So, you've got an option when we go through all this, to actually do a segmented phasing, so we can give you this start, we call it project management phase. Now, you have a contract here tonight that is roughly $8,600. To get us started, to get us to that point where we can sit down and pick and choose where you want. Then we can find to, once you pick your sidewalk sections, based on our estimates, once you pick and choose those, then we can get into the actual nuts and bolts of those specific sections. Instead of giving you a blanket, because we really were kind of handcuffed on, well, what if they choose this, or what if they don't, and we choose this? And we were kind of throwing numbers in and out of this entire proposal that we've put together. So, the numbers have stayed the same throughout the stellar preliminary stuff. So we haven't changed any of those numbers. I understand why you guys were worried with the whole thing. And of course, we don't get any grant, you know, there is no, yeah, so, we understand. So what our proposal today is, is to do a project management proposal only, and it's for $6,820. I've got two copies, if you want to look it over, but the, the same breakdown was the same breakdown in our overall proposal. It was just, all those other areas were filled out to get our code. So all we did was take this project management and said, okay, if you just started to go through the public committee, we go through all this PowerPoint that we have to present at the meeting, and then start that selection process based on your decision. That's what will get us to. So then, once those choices are made, we'll bring another contract and say, okay, that cost is going to be X. So, we, we were talking internally, I can't tell you there's going to be a savings until we have to choose those streets, those roads of the project. Once we get those, then we can sit down and go through them point by point, and bring another proposal to you that'll actually show you those costs. Fair enough. So I think the $8,620 is very reasonable. As a matter of fact, when they sent it to me, I went, are you sure? Because it's, it's such a small amount to get us started, so.
Just a minute ago, you said 6,820. Did you say around?
I said 6,820, didn't I?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sixty, I wrote that.
No, 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 8,620.
Yeah, it's 8,620. Yeah, it's 8,620 on the, on the going track.
8,620, I'm sorry. That number is correct, I am wrong.
Okay.
And don't share this with any of my guys.
We could replay a lot of streams.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, I think in order to get this started, so we don't miss any of the deadlines, and that timing is real critical, thus for the, the special meetings and the public meetings. It's critical that that gets approved tonight, so we don't have more, so we can get it started. So, if the board so desires a motion and a second and a vote would be helpful to get us to start. If you have any questions, file me up, I can tell you the wrong number.
Anybody have any questions, Tim? About this? Is it over yet?
It's answered over.
I think this is either a, yeah. It's the exact same contract you guys looked over. The only thing still happens is projects.
I'll make a motion to approve $8,620 for the first phase of the contract.
Second on that? I'll say. Second?
Thank you. We can get one signed copy tonight, and I'll leave one with Gary. Now, I'll take one.
Oh, oh, what a favor. Yeah, I didn't do that.
Yeah. I.
A lot of photos, that guy, that's good.
And then I, I did want to just mention, we do have the contract proposal for Clark D's too. So that's a much extended timeline as I mentioned, so, we don't, I mean, I'm not one, you know, die taking action on this, but this is probably something we'll be talking about at the August and September meeting, and probably what they actually, I don't have time on. I guess we should, since we got, I think you guys are probably here interested in the emergency services garage. Don't go over our run, but I think we could probably hit on that a little bit. I don't know if people put much more thought into that. I know I kind of pitched Jason an idea, if we could, you know, take the project budget, maybe assume 85,000 by the time we do some concrete and electric. And then, we could look at a, the price on a 10-year loan at 4% and kind of, you know, I suggest, if you guys pay two-thirds, EMS will pay one-third. If the township trustee is willing to pay a portion, um, we can kind of reduce that amount, you know, work out something. Again, I don't, I don't know what your thoughts are on this project, but I do think, if we want to be any benefit to the EMS, you need to make it a decision not soon enough later.
If they might have a chance to look over that, for the results or whatever.
And I did, I did speak with many instrumental, and they, they said they'd be willing to, they didn't think it'd be a problem changing those terms.
May I have a few minutes to speak concerning this?
Yes, yes.
So, I'd like to kind of talk about a little bit of the history here and what's going on, and some of the miscommunications I feel like that has happened through this whole process. So, we bought this truck in, I believe it was 2021, does that sound right then? 2020, 2021, it was ordered in '20, so delivered in '21. At the time, we had several incidences where that truck really came and came to that side by side in particular. But the issue it was having was, we didn't want to drive that thing down the road, we wanted something all of them. Trailer wasn't really feasible, it was glued to different items. Well, one of the reasons why we ended up purchasing it at the time, because we was told by a town councilman that we would get a building, no cost to us, that we would get a building provided for that, for that truck. Now, that's been four and a half years ago, and we still don't have a building. And it's not from our fault, we've done things, we've taken steps, we've had meetings, we've brought this to light. It's been brought up several times, that we are trying to protect your equipment, this is your truck. It's just as much your truck as it is ours, and the township trustees. We didn't buy it, you guys provide us the money to buy stuff, but now, we don't have any place to put it still. We've, we've gotten quotes, several of them, people won't quote it anymore, we've asked for quotes from these people, they don't want to quote it anymore, because hey, we've quoted it before. We've done it, we revised it, we don't, you're not doing anything. So since that time, responder five has came in. I would do want to back up, one of the meetings is, the town did tell us we would look into agreements. I don't know whatever happened with that. We have not heard, seen anything from a grant, not one. I don't know where that process is.
You could, who was the councilman that told you?
Tom Walker. Yeah. But, I mean, but since then, it was brought up in council meetings, so other council members have been made aware of this. They know about it, and still nothing, but since that time, now responder five is, which, don't get me wrong, I don't want this to sound bad towards it, because I'm glad they're here, they are great, they're phenomenal leaders. One of the things they messed up in, is they didn't confirm they had a place to put that car. They thought, hey, Bill Brooker's just going to take it. Somebody apparently told them that, it's not true, I never once said it, until he, you know, he called me when it was almost done, and said, hey, we're ready to bring that out. I'm like, you know, I told him, I'm like, we don't have a place to put it, we do not have a spot inside there. Now, I fully believe it needs to be inside, it needs to be climate controlled. They have too much equipment, too much money invested, it needs to be indoors. That being said, the best thing that I can do, you know, apparently is the storage, you know, the garage. That would help us too, but, at this point, the fire department is getting very frustrated, because we've asked for this for five years, or four or five years, and nothing. We've been pushed to the side. Now the responder five is here, it's, we need to build a building, we need to build it now. So much, that I was asked three times in your meeting last week, if we can have a special meeting in the firehouse to help discuss fines. Very frustrating. We're pushed off for four or five years, but now that they're here, and you guys are ready to move, we have to have special meetings to jump through groups to get this through. I don't, I don't know what the answer is. I feel like us contributing money to it, I don't know that that's the best option, it's not my sole decision over there, so, you know, it's the membership. But you guys provide us money, and the township provides us our budget. So you're going to provide us money to pay yourself back, the township's offering money to pay for this. We could go ask them for money and maybe get something else, maybe we could get that money put to something in the firehouse versus just going to install it. So, I just wanted to voice my concerns and where I'm at with it, and kind of the membership right now, from what I've talked to, they're frustrated. They're very frustrated, because they don't feel like there's any support coming from the town. So, if you have questions for me, I'm, well, you know, I'm here to answer them. We're still open to the lease option or whatever, but. I didn't know anything about anybody telling you about grants, I wasn't on the town's Tom Walker list, I didn't know that. Well, that's the, that's the problem, is every time it's brought up, every time we talk about it, well, that's a different council. Yeah, that's a different council, well, you know, it's not a different council, because we've brought it up numerous times since then. Tim has talked about it, I've talked about it, Drew's talked about it. So, it's, it's not that it's a different council, I mean, that, yeah, they were promises made, but council is aware of this, and council knows that this is your meeting.
Yeah.
And we're trying to.
I agree with that, yeah.
But. So, that's my soapbox for tonight, unless you have any questions. Do I got anything?
So did you have any?
Did we have a meeting?
Special meeting?
Not, we're meeting tomorrow.
I just wanted what the membership said.
We're meeting tomorrow, so. I'd like to know.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yep.
So, several years ago, when I was park chief, we always had a discussion about our budget was split between the town and township. 60% paid by the township and 40% paid by the town. And it was always questioned why that amount was. And I finally dug deep and found a copy of this contract between town, township, and fire department. It was, I think, back in the 50s. Anyway, I provided a copy of that to, I think Kevin Turner was town manager at that time, and I know he gave it to some council people, I don't know where it exists now. But the reason for the 60 slash 40 for the town was because the town took the responsibility on for housing, the equipment. That's why theirs was 40%, and the rest of the budget was 60% to the township, was because the town took on the responsibility for housing or equipment. So that was the reason for the 60-40 split. So, you know, unless some other contract has been negotiated, my personal feeling is, it's the town's responsibility to find housing for our equipment, not the township's.
Well, it needs to, they, they need somewhere to get their stuff, I mean, I agree with that. As of everything I'm new and I'm learning what, you know, it's supposed to do here, so. I didn't know what the split was, to be honest with you. So should we wait until you have your special meetings, see what you have there, then come back to us on the next meeting?
If you want us to find and put any cost to it, I would.
Is that the contract there?
Yeah. I don't know what the group's decision will be tomorrow, and we're going to agree to anything to do with it on.
Right.
So I can't speak on that.
That comes those out there, the gas and tires?
Yeah, the cost of equipment. Paying and operating on base cost, it's 40. Putting one ounce gas or a tire. Yeah, dude, my understanding is there is supposed to be some sort of mutual agreement of the parties, and I don't know that we ever, at least in my time, I don't know that the three parties have ever got together, agreed on anything.
Sounds like it.
I mean, and, and, I mean, we're working off a 1969 agreement, and that's probably a little bit problematic too.
It hasn't been problematic until it's. So. A new building is being discussed.
Yeah, I think that's the problem, is the communication, that was. This is my fault.
I don't have a problem, I went through them. I don't, I like Comer for them, is who I would get for the building, I went through him and liked that, and I know he's not the cheapest, I just feel like his stuff, I mean. I'm all for you guys to get in the building too, and I think we all are, but, you know, and. I mean, have to find the money, we'll find the money, I guess, you know, whether we have to get out of a riverboat or whatever, I, you know. I know we don't really want to, but, I mean.
We need to figure out something.
Last year, we put it in storage through the winter, so, you know, we didn't have it for six months, five months, because it was in storage. I mean, it's already certain for us from sitting on something. Opinion, that's. Need to do something.
Yeah.
You know, we had to finance it to get on that path. I mean, that vehicle sitting out there's already saved one life, and it's worth it to support the community, and try and put, if it's anything, we can put everybody behind that, would be one thing that would work with my life.
And then give us fire checks, to create a fire system.
Yeah, so, I think supporting laws is something we need to do, and, you know, we appreciate you guys and the time that you guys have invested in this. And like I said, there's something that we can put our money behind, by the way, support, I think that's one of the causes, we can rest our whole family. If you have any chance to look over that.
I'm probably going to bring the, I think it was the. Yeah. Can I, can I say something?
Yeah.
I don't have anything in it, and I couldn't care less which one is picked, but if you have proposals, and this is a public works project. Law says you have to go with the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. So, if you're not going to go with the low bidder, there's going to have to be a finding of why that is, relates to their responsibility or responsiveness. Responsive means, did they bid it the way you want it? You know, does it cover what you want done? If it doesn't, it's not responsive. Responsible means, well, we've got concerns about a chief of the contractor, and they have to be objective. They've had that happen in the past, it's been so long ago, it was Rick Fields. That raised an issue, and we were able to say, no, this bidder, this, these people did not do a good job on this project, number one, for sure. And so we're having that, because if you don't do that, you go to something else and you don't make that record, then, you know, you're open to, to legal action relative to that, so that's important.
Did we get four votes, or was it?
We didn't get five.
Who was the lowest, the Anchester?
Anchester, middle, it was 61, 25.
But were they responsive? There was some question on the, the constructability, there was some construction standards that were questioned on.
The one, the only thing that was questioned was the term, the odd term that I brought up. They did quote everything else, so.
And then they told you what, and you, did you ask?
They verbally said that they, you know, they didn't think it'd be a problem changing those terms. They referenced some of the research.
That's Joe Redd's operation, what was the name?
I think he has some interest in it, I don't know what, though.
So, so they're responsive, are they responsible? I, I don't know that we've had any work, and I don't know if it's the same end, we, I actually saw Joe about six or eight months ago, and I realized he was still building buildings, and he was pre-fabricated, and still, we may have opened, we don't build any forever. It's just something we've got to be careful about, and I realize the council wants to move, and wants to move quickly. Sounds like there's a lot of votes here to do it.
Yep.
To bring it up, but we can't get crossways on this, on this bidding, we want to make sure we do that right. Don't know how much.
I, I think everyone's, I think, I think they all have their posts, we're holding for 30 days, I mean, we're good to our, our, all this meeting. Take that time.
And I know these guys don't want to delay, you can't screw that up.
Yeah, my, my, my hope was that we could all get together on the same page as far as how we're going to do it, and if we're going to do it, so that we can be in a position to take action next, or next.
Maybe we can look at the bids and see if there's any issues coming down here. Those big boys, those guys, make sure it's responsive, it's not even moving against bidder. Just begin it here.
Everything too, we can go ahead and figure out as far as planning on our side. I mean, if we set the project at 9 at 85,000, and that's what it is, and that's what we work around and see what makes the most sense.
That was kind of my fault, you know, I think we got a much better idea now, what this thing's going to cost.
That's the first one you found out, there's 14 days.
14, yeah. I just, that's me, just really.
Yeah, that was on 7/11, so hopefully.
It's the past.
25th.
That's, that's already.
No, today's the 21st, 21st, we've got a few days.
I'm asking her to hold it.
Yeah, so.
That's the 16th.
We have to hack in. If they want to hold it, not, we're going to get your, that would be helpful, or that would be helpful.
Well, I guess you need to be on the one tomorrow, or something to turn out.
So, what, what's your all's position, I mean, are you, are we comfortable accepting a quote of this?
Yeah, the way.
Yeah, first off.
You need that.
And then, and then are, I mean, you guys, how we want to go about paying for it, and do we want to do an additional preparation for the riverboat fund, or?
That's everybody's opinions on funding here.
I personally think, yeah, Jerry's going to put 20, 20,000 in it, so that leaves us with 65,000.
Yeah.
I personally think we ought to go in the riverboat, single loan.
Me too. I, I don't.
I think the ones.
Got the money, I see. Me too, I, I don't, you've got the money, I see no sense in.
We haven't.
It's going to take us time to go through that closing process.
Yeah.
And you guys haven't been spending that much in the riverboat anyway, you know?
Then you got the.
That one year, it froze, it's gone. So, that's my person.
Oh, Swiss barn is only good for seven weeks. Commerce is good for sixty days. Gossman.
Swiss barn is already out, then.
Yeah. Gossman says the proposal made with Throm is not accepted within one day. It says one day. Maybe that's why I wanted to.
We got, we got Manchester Metal still Friday, and then we got Comer. So, what's the date on Comer?
Sixty days.
Sixty days. And then, so that, I mean, the rationale is go back to Manchester, talk to them, see if they're going to extend it, and if not, go to Comer.
Yeah, I can tell them, I can tell.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah.
Everybody's. But, Eric talked to Manchester Metal about an extension.
I'll make a motion to let Eric talk to Manchester Metal for an extension on their bid.
You got a second minute?
I'll say.
About that. And then, as far as funding. We have a discussion on that, so, I think we should take it from River, Riverboat, or?
I would just, just we take it from Riverboat, as.
Eighty-nine, eighty-five thousand?
What, is, are they going to give twen, is Jerry definitely giving twenty thousand for it?
He's only verbally talked about it.
Why don't you say up to eighty-five maybe?
I mean, I think, I think it'd be nice if we could have an agreement, where we sign, and then as soon as we sign that, we can accept the quote.
Right.
It'd be my preference.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I mean, I, I trust Jerry too, I don't think he's.
Right. So, Jerry, is, is twenty, we just need to do sixty-five. Do you want to do it now, I mean, so, so should we say we will go up to eighty-five thousand, just?
Eighty-five thousand, yeah.
Out of Riverboat.
The rear boat.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we use eighty-five, up to eighty-five thousand of our riverboat fund to fund this building. You got a second on that?
I'll second that.
A second, favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, I'll do that. So, when do we want to get together again then for making that decision?
My plan would be to do it at a regular meeting.
Regular meeting.
So, I mean, that should do it in two weeks, if you have it's not.
Yeah.
Or do stuff like that.
So, you've got everything you need to move forward, so we can have something prepared for, for us?
Yeah, I think so, so I'm going to start looking at pricing for electrical and concrete, and see how much that's going to push us. And we'll, uh, that will be, or always meeting.
Anything else on that? That's, I don't know that. Hey, got anything else, do you guys? Yes, the North Street, Bank Street, so.
All right, so, I just, uh, want to stick this off, I, I had a chance to look a little bit more into the process that was done last time, um, and it does. I did draft it, just a resolution, and that I, there's a state statute, I found that you actually can, um, you know, accept proposals, but we're supposed to say that, you know, we're, we're not going to take it like the, uh. For the average of freight values or the highest bidder type thing, we got to say, make a statement for economic development purposes. I figured John could take, take this and look at it, you guys can see if this is, you know, the route you'd rather take, as opposed to transferring it to redevelopment, and, you know, allowing them to do some similar process. Um, I don't think it's a problem if we want to do it this way, and it looks, I, I haven't, um, I wasn't able to get copies of the meeting minutes, but I found some agendas where it was on the top, so I could. Kind of figure out a little bit more about what we did in the past, but I think we got a general idea, but, you know, we. You know, we, I would recommend if we would do that, we pass this resolution, we draft an RFP process, and we put it out there, hopefully someone's interested.
I think rather keep it with us than give it to the developer, and however many else goes about that.
I'm fine with pulling that route first, to be honest with you, and see if we get any traction from our side, if we can move this along.
So, I mean, I. If you guys are okay, us, I mean, I don't necessarily need action on that resolution tonight, we give, I'd probably prefer to give John and I some time to talk about, look over. Um, if there's any terms that you want, and like a request for proposal packet, like we want, you know, that they add a minimum, and someone submitted proposal, has to provide X. Whatever that might be, I mean, it would be good to know now, so if you put that in packet. Um, otherwise, we can. You know, I hope, I hope we have something.
Our next regular meeting, right?
Yeah.
Everybody, think about it, think if there's any stipulations in the contract, whatever, you could get that, and let it, or bring it back.
Yep. Yep, and then, then we could talk about terms at the next meeting, and then, you know, if that's not, like, we take it and put it back together, put that out. And then, um, I got one-two-nine-two-six Bank Street, um, I don't really have anything to record on this, but, you know, we just kind of talked about it amongst ourselves, so I did just want to. Have that as an agenda item, um, it does sound like that's really more so, after talking with Atlas, it sounds like it's more so the site and the underground storage tank that's. Potentially on the property, and not really the, the friendship center itself, so, I don't know that there's a ton of benefit, honestly, but, I mean, it's, it's not going to cost us anything, and. If something ever changes to that parking lot, you know, we can say it's clear and good, and, you know, move on about it ways, so, so. So, I, you know, I just think it's something we can afford with.
Do we need a motion to go ahead and put that brown field in, I guess?
Yeah, if you, if you want, I think it'd be good.
I'll make a motion, and we proceed with the brown field report. Thirty seconds, one favor.
That whole business?
Anybody got anything else?
I have one thing on new business, um, Josh and I were talking about, um, that code enforcement issue, we're trying to do multiple citations at the same time. And we ran across one section of our code that actually references the clerk treasurer sighting notice. Um, John and I talked about maybe, I don't know the, the reason that the clerk treasurer should have to cite that, I don't know that it makes sense for Reed to go testify and. Show course that, there are need, um, you know, junk issues, um, so that, I think that's, I mean, if you guys are, yeah, I think that's something we'll probably look at for the next meeting.
Draft the language that, yeah, just change it, assume it to, to the town manager or, maybe designate if you're out of town, or.
If we can leave it open, I think that's the best, I mean, either myself or Josh, or any town official can cite it. That, that, that would, I mean, because I would think whoever cites it's going to have to testify in court.
That's generally the case.
Violation, yeah, so, I mean, I, I think flexibility goes best.
All right, I'll get something drafted, I'll be ready to change that little part of the section.
That's all I have, I don't have any other business.
Yes, I do.
Yes.
See, what was, I just thought about it, I just wrote down, okay, I know one thing, Russell, okay, when, when Matt was here. Like, he didn't take no overtime, so, the council said do not take overtime, you just woke up in, like, if he comes to a council meeting. You know, like, an hour for a council meeting, he just hooks that in with his forty hours, I just want to make sure that's correct.
Yeah, 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 he can just. Yeah, yeah.
Right, right, he can just.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I just want to make sure that was correct, that's what we did with Matt, and then, I want to make sure, because I said something to him, I talked to Eric about it too. So, I just want to make sure that's clear, and also, that in our local agreement, signing that.
Oh, yeah, John, before you leave, maybe we'll just get a signature on that, so that Reed can send that in with a check.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to sign it.
Okay.
I, yeah, I don't know if you guys have thoughts, if we, I, you know, after talking about it, I just thought maybe just have John sign it.
Yeah, I've already sent, I've been emailing me, and I've already sent him emails.
That's fine.
It's coming from me.
Any other business?
I'll make a motion, major.
Second.
Second.
I got it, I think, I think it's on.
Typically, we'll sign this, will this be Derek or the town president?
Derek, will you sign this, or?
Yes. This is going to be the town.
All right, it's up to you guys, I can, as long as you guys approve it, I can sign.